Good evening, everyone. I love that. Hammer Park. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the August 14th, 2025 meeting of the Johnson County Community College Board of Trustees. Why don't you join me in kicking off the meeting with a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. By way of roll call, it looks like we have everyone here except Trustee Mitchell and Trustee Hamel. And so we do have a quorum, and we'll go ahead and proceed. And Dr. Mixa, we're going to start with words and recognitions. And this is really kind of my favorite part sometimes of the meeting is hearing from both our students and people who have done wonderful things at the college. So what do you have for us?
So we have our first one, our U.S. Department of Energy Algae Prize. I've talked to them a little bit. I'll let them come up and roll here. This is really an exciting activity or event.
All right. Thanks for having us. I'm Dr. Heather Seitz. I teach here as full-time faculty in biology and biotechnology, and I am excited to let the team speak for themselves here today. So we have a student, Will Walker, here will tell us, tell you guys a little bit about the project and why we got involved in it. And then Clover will tell you about the competition weekend, which was incredibly exciting.
So for the algae prize competition, our team's project was to make or to bioengineer chlorella algae with petase and metase enzymes. And this allowed it to biodegrade PET plastic like a water bottle.
And then that weekend was in Golden, Colorado at INRAW, which is the National Renewable Energy Laboratory, which we had three big days for us, which the first one was just a poster symposium where we just kind of, it was a more casual presentation where we presented our research to the judges and just kind of like how JCCC does the poster symposium here as well. And then the next day, we actually presented formally in front of the judges, which we presented a slideshow presentation and explained our project. And afterwards, they asked us questions. And after that day, the next day, they introduced the top five finalists, which we happened to be one of the top five, which we were actually the only community college out of the groups that made it into the top five. The rest were graduate students. And we only had an hour to prepare for the next set of questions that they were going to ask us in order to select the grand champion.
So this project took place over two years. So these students didn't really mention that, but they should have, right? They, they worked for two years on this project from creating the research proposal, which was a 15-page document, to then working multiple times per week all summer in the newly renovated biology research lab space, which we got to sort of build as a research lab through this project. And then we were, the algae prize competition weekend was not able to happen on schedule in April, and we were in fear that it might get canceled. I think we had, you guys were notified about that. And then it was sort of at the very last minute dropped into the middle of the summer. And so we were able to take three of our team members, Clover included, Helen Laguna and Cheyenne Howard also were able to accompany us there. But other students had amazing, other opportunities they were taking place in. Will was not able to join us on competition weekend because he was on the Iceland trip. And then a few of our other students had new employment, which is great, but we couldn't get off for the competition weekend. So as a collective group, they were an outstanding group of students who dedicated all their volunteer time to research this project and do amazing work that stood right up next to the grad students, who that's their primary job and is just to do that research. And here, these students were taking it on in addition to school, family. We had a team member that had twins during this process.
Oh, my gosh.
As well as their work responsibilities, and they added on to that by doing this research. It was, it was an amazing experience for them.
It's wonderful to hear from you. And I remember Heather having the conversation this spring that they may not get to go. And just so you guys know, our response as a board was, we want to hear from them even if they don't get to go. But I'm so grateful that you were able to go, and what an accomplishment. It's, it's great enough to finish like at the top of the pile, but to beat out people who are so far elevated in their education, that's tremendous. Questions and comments, Trustee Cross and then Trustee Jennings.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Biodegrade what? I missed it. Which substance was it?
So it's PET plastic, but it's just like number one plastic. It's in water bottles.
Good. That's great. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Trustee Jennings.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I've already talked to you guys, but what an amazing opportunity for you. And this is going to look really wonderful on anything that you create as a resume for wherever you end up, because wow. And to be put up against graduate students, who Heather's right, it's that, that's their full-time job. And here you are doing it kind of on the side, and you got that far. So it's pretty incredible. We're very proud of you.
Can you tell me what?
Go ahead, Trustee, retain your phone.
What are your majors and what do you plan to do next?
I'm majoring in biology. So I have an associate's of science and an associate's of liberal arts from here. I'm staying here one more semester just to get prerequisites. But I'm transferring to UMKC for a major in biology.
Okay. Thank you.
I graduated here last spring with an associate's of science, and I'm going to be at K-State next week studying environmental science.
Wonderful.
Yeah, I know you always have something you'd like to say. Trustee Smith Everett, go right ahead.
First of all, thank you for being here tonight, even though one of you is already out the door. So thanks for coming back. We really appreciate it. I heard a statistic a couple of years ago that community college students are seven times more likely to complete their bachelor's because of the skills they acquire in community college than an incoming freshman at a regular higher ed institution, four-year institution. You guys are great examples of students who their full job is not research. That's not everything you're here for. But if you could do this and achieve what you have already, I can't wait to hear about where you are in five years or 10 years from now. All I ask is you don't forget where you started, and you come back and you tell people how it all started, and you were competing against graduate students before you even got to any of those other institutions that offer bachelor's and graduate degrees. So thank you so much. You guys are great, and what a great story and what a great accomplishment.
You know, what a tremendous achievement. And I think your, your faculty advisors would probably tell you the same thing, and that is one of the greatest skills you can develop as you go through your education is the ability to stand in front of a group of people and defend something that you have done and make it important to them. Because if you can do that with respect to this project, it's going to take you a long way regardless of what you decide to do. And STEM students, how wonderful is that? So thanks for sharing this moment with us, Will. Thanks for coming back. K-State, you know, go Cats, Emon, all that. And thank you so much for sharing that with us.
Thank you.
Okay. I think we have one more item on your agenda.
Yes. Before I introduce our next group, I just want to give a little more props to the last group. I think one of the things you'll hear me try to say over and over, we're the best community college around, and I think this is one of the reasons to say that, that they do it. It demonstrates the wonderful commitment for our, our faculty and the work that they're doing there. It also demonstrates the wonderful commitment of our students. You guys are pretty modest. I think you could brag even a little bit more if you wanted to do that as well, too. So we really truly appreciate that. Well, now we'll head on. Oh, and I just want to say one other thing. The idea of I couldn't present at this conference because I was in Iceland, that's pretty cool, right? I mean, that's pretty awesome. All right, so we get to move on to another thing that makes us again, one of the best community colleges in the country, if not the best. I'll hand it over to Jay to take it from here.
All right. So we are talking tonight about the ASHE Stars rankings that Johnson County Community College got to receive gold. And I'm not sure if we're going to see that up there. I only see it here. Do you guys see the slides?
Maybe you should be bringing it up.
Okay. All right, cool. But before we get on with that, I'd like to talk to Trustee Cross for a second.
We need your guest names for the harvest dinner.
It's Greg and the Aunt Mitchell.
I didn't.
Anyway, we'll talk. It's fine. It's fine. But I thought I just gave advantages opportunity for direct communication.
It's my fault.
Okay. It's all good. It's all good. Yes, so Stars is again a third-party rating system of sustainability broadly defined all across the campus, and it's something that we've been working on here in some ways since the very beginning of our sustainability movement back in 2009. And those of you who've been on the board for a while have heard me talking about this in one way or another since that point in time. And we are the number one community college in the United States now based upon this ranking system and number five internationally. Everybody else is Canadian, so we're coming after the connection. And so I do want to recognize the rest of the Center for Sustainability team, although we'll then move on to the broader team here on campus who worked on this. First of all, of course, is Dr. Rachel Ross Allen, who's the Education and Outreach Coordinator in Center for Sustainability, Michael Ray, who's the Senior Project Manager in the Center, and then Professor Antle, who is our Zero Waste Coordinator. And you may also be aware of her work, obviously, with the bird strike study here on campus. She'll be doing a fun PLD on Wednesday, talking about how we're working with the warehouse for surplus property reuse and all sorts of the fun stuff like that. So I am now going to step aside, which would be a great joy to people like Trustee Cross. And I am going to turn it over to Dr. Ross Allen to talk a little bit about the process and who all was involved in this effort.
Hello, everyone. So as Dr. Antle said, this was the ASHE Stars process. So it stands for the Association for the Advancement of Sustainability in Higher Education. And Stars is the Sustainability Tracking, Assessment, and Rating System. So this is a campus-wide effort. We have to give a huge shout out to Rachel Lear. She was a driving force behind this whole process for us and kind of championing, getting a task force together and helping us to guide through this process. So what the Stars process looks like is it looks at sustainability across our entire campus. So it's not just our department. It's everything from dining services to facilities to looking at our curriculum, our grounds, all sorts of differing aspects. So that task force was really important because we wanted buy-in from the whole campus community, not just for this Stars report, which was submitted in May, and it's a three-year process that we do every year, but more importantly, to look at the policies and the practices around sustainability currently and figuring out where we could implement change for the better beyond the Stars process, right? Just because it's the right thing to do. So these are the folks that were, you know, in the meetings, kind of helped drive the work in differing departments, but this really was a campus-wide effort. The Stars rating system, it's kind of color-coded. There's bronze, silver, gold, and then platinum. We were previously silver, and through this report, we are now gold, which is very, very exciting. And as Jay said, the number one community college in the nation. So something to be very proud of. We are all part of that. So thank you all for your efforts in advancing sustainability.
And now we move on to our next assessment in two or three years, and we'll see how far up the ladder we can go.
Platinum, baby.
That's awesome. Questions, comments, Trustee Cross.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Professor Antle, I crazy love you, and one of my biggest challenges at this place is to not show too much bias or love toward you. So I appreciate the joke, and I thank you. Your work is amazing, and thank you all.
Trustee Smith Everett.
So I want to know, what do you associate with us moving up in rankings? What's the difference maker for us?
Well, I think maybe.
Yeah. So from going from silver to gold this time was actually small increases across the board. So it was not just one major area, which is great if you think about it, in that we're moving the needle all across campus. And so those little wins were what elevated us to the gold category, and also very small little wins got us to number one in the nation for community colleges. I mean, it was under a single point that got us that difference. Yeah.
And several people in this room are part of conversations about, okay, let's make sure we can prove this because we're going to need this point.
Yeah, so just little gains. And so platinum would be the next category, but we're still, the, the point system for that would be a pretty big jump for the next three years, but we're going to continue having conversations on our Stars process and how we can integrate sustainability more into our campus over the next three years.
Yeah, one area that we did have some significant increase was renewable energy because of our agreement with, with EverG. So that was one area we saw a big jump, but it is really lots of little gains all across the campus.
Very good. Thank you.
And the Stars report is public, so if you're curious, you can go and check all of that out.
Trustee Ratan.
Somewhat unrelated to Stars, can you give us 90 seconds about your Iceland trip? Or is that showing up on another agenda?
I don't think it's on anyone's agenda. I don't know, Will should probably be talking about this. I mean, there's a report that students got out of, got out of the trip. But we studied geology and we studied sustainability, so we go to a geothermal power plant, we go to a hydroelectric power plant, we go to a greenhouse that helps grow 30% of the tomatoes in Iceland. It's all geothermally heated and powered. Then, of course, volcanoes erupt when we show up, and that's a pretty normal thing. But lots of, and if you're a geologist, Iceland is very much Disneyland for you. And so my colleague, Dr. Catherine Knoll, who's literally a rock star, is a, that was funny, is literally able to walk around with students and, and, you know, literally the beach or the, or the path of walking along is our classroom. So it was, and great trip, with support from Study Away, and hopefully we'll get to do it again in 2026.
I hear they call that the Jay-Antle effect. Every time you go there, you cause volcanoes. That's just what I heard from my contacts. And it's so excited it erupts.
I will say, even though it is sort of funny, it is also sort of sad in some ways because the town of Grendebek has now been evacuated because of those constant eruptions, and we actually got to show students what that looks like, you know? Because, so it's perfectly fine for us to kind of, no offense, to be joking about the stuff because it's sort of odd and funny, unless you live in a town that is now having to be bought out by your government because you have, you have volcanoes going off outside your community 18 times over the course of four years.
I was trying to be funny. It didn't work very well.
Well, Volcano Man, just one more thing about Iceland. You post absolutely the best photographs on Facebook about your trip and your students and what they're getting out of it. And someday, you're going to take me. I just know it. But back to what we're here to celebrate. Great, great team effort. And I know that there were a lot of people involved, but, but Jay, I'm going to embarrass you here a little bit. You and I first met in 2009 in Washington, D.C., when you were convincing our senator at the time, Sam Brownback, to get behind you in your efforts to bring sustainability to our campus. And you have since then, so I guess it's been a long time. What's that, almost 15 years, right? Mentored and driven and led the sustainability efforts on this campus to the point where we are today. And the team wouldn't be the team without you standing behind it. So kudos to the entire team, but Jay, you deserve a huge shout out for the work that you've done for sustainability. I know that you're a humble guy, and I know that you don't like to hear me say that, but I'm going to say it anyway. So thanks for the presentation. Tremendous honor. Tremendous honor.
And I will, of course, say thank you, but it's, again, without support from people on this board, over multiple generations of the board, people all across campus, this would not have happened.
Thank you so much, guys. And does that finish us up?
Yes, except, hey, we need to be platinum.
Is that a binding commitment on the part of the president of this college?
All right. That brings us to the open forum portion of our agenda. The open forum section of the board agenda is a time for members of the community to provide comments to the board. There will be an open forum period during each regularly scheduled board meeting, and comments are limited to five minutes unless a significant number of people plan to speak, in which case the chair may limit a person's comments to less than five minutes. In order to be recognized, individuals must register at the door 15 minutes prior to each regularly scheduled board meeting. When addressing the board, registered speakers are asked to remain at the podium, should be respectful and civil, and are encouraged to address individual personnel or student matters directly with the appropriate college department. As a practice, the college does not respond in this setting when the matter concerns personnel or student issues or matters that are being addressed through our established grievance or suggestion processes or otherwise the subject of review by the college or board. It's my understanding there are no registered speakers for this evening's meeting.
Right.
Okay. So I always have to read that. I know you all could probably recite it in your sleep, but that brings us to the board reports section of the agenda. And first up is the wonderful Mr. Dick Carter with our college lobbyist report.
We're still in that slow period of the summer dog days of heat that, that happens every year in the legislative process. And it's just now where we're starting to see some of the interim committees tick up, and, and we'll start paying very close attention to a couple of the committees that will be meeting soon. I always like to draw your attention to the receipts that come into the state's coffers each month because, again, it guides the conversation and the policy that is developed into PICA. And we've seen a continued trend of individual income tax surpassing expectations. We've also seen that same trend going the other way for corporate income tax and sales and use compensating tax, compensating use tax. I think that's, that's interesting to watch when we start having conversations about sales taxes, just where that is in, in the general game. I think it'll continue to drive the, the policy decisions that are, are being proposed at the state level, but it certainly is worth watching when the, the folks that are the economists of the state get together and make those forecasts when, when we're missing them, whether it's slight or whether it's significant on, on either side of that, that ballgame. And so, again, well worth noting that even after many of the projections have been made and adjusted, that that individual income tax rate continues to exceed expectations at the state level. We'll see what happens as the, as the months continue to play out. We have a new regent that went through the confirmation process this week. Regent Pamela Amar was approved by the Confirmation Oversight Committee that meets during the summer. She's from Wichita. I think it's important to note that she has an associate's degree in dental hygiene. We won't ignore the fact that she also has a law degree from, from Calif, or from Colorado, from the University of Denver. Again, I think it'll be a good appointment on behalf of all of higher education in Kansas. She will stand for a full vote in the Senate, as will Kathy Wafmore, who was also reappointed, who was filling an unexpired term. Still have one more regent that will be named and appointed at some point in the very near future, and that will be a regent to replace outgoing Regent Carl Ice from the Manhattan area. So I would anticipate that we'll see someone from that area of the state appointed soon. But again, we play in that ballgame. We're under that umbrella, and it's always good to know exactly who we're working with. And I think, I think we'll have some good success there. We had Senator Marshall visit campus recently, and it was a good, engaging visit. He had the opportunity to sit down with Dr. Mixa and meet him one-to-one for the first time since, since Dr. Mixa's been on campus. And it's probably also the first time that Senator Marshall's been on campus, and we did have a good conversation. He was very intrigued and interested about the students who won the Department of Energy Algae Award. And so we followed up with information regarding, regarding that and had some good conversations about where we're at in the, in the process with regard to aid to students, whether it's through workforce Pell or through Pell Grants. And so it was nice to be able to show him around campus a little bit as well after the, after he met with, with Dr. Mixa. This is also the time of year where we're working on the plans that we make for the events that we do with our legislators. We're, we're talking about maybe changing some things up, still, still having some pre-meetings before the session kicks off in January, but maybe it might look a little different than, than a breakfast or a lunch, or maybe we'll still have that and blend in some other activities. And so, so be on the lookout for some things that we're, that we're working on. Kate and I are planning for, for the near future. And then, like I said, the legislative budget process, the Kansas Legislative Budget Committee will meet for the first time in earnest in August. It'll be August 26th. And so that usually is generally just an overall review of where things are at with the Kansas economy and the Kansas budgeting process. The real work won't start taking place till, till September, October, but we'll be watching that very closely as, as legislators take on again their second year of developing their own version of, of the state budget. And so that starts on August 26th. And then I'll be following very closely the Education Funding Task Force. We're not really a part of it. We're not really in it, but there are often conversations that are held during those meetings that, that could be a one-off or, or pertain to us. And/or there could be some discussions about what some of the, that high school transition looks like between those students that are, that are dual-enrolled. So we'll be watching very closely. Those, those meetings will take place in September. I think that kind of catches us up to date. There's, again, not a lot going on right now, but we're kind of right at that point where the fall kicks in, and we'll see some of that activity on the uptick.
Thank you for your report. Any questions for Mr. Carter, Trustee Smith Everett, and then Trustee Cross?
You may not be able to answer this, Dick, maybe a question for our team, but did Senator Marshall come of his own or because of our request?
It was a combination of a meeting of one of his new staffers, and it presented the opportunity to have him on campus. And so we, we always relish the opportunity to have any of our, and invite elected officials on campus for those updates, those one-on-one conversations. And certainly with a new president, we're taking that opportunity to make a lot of introductions.
Yeah, for sure. Well, I'm, I'm really glad for it. As far as I know, I don't think he had been here previously in any state of his term, whether running or since being in office, is my understanding or what I've been told in the past. So I'm really glad to have him on campus. And about how long was he here?
Well, he had a full day of activities, and they're in the district now. So, no, not an all-day activities here. He had other meetings that he was traveling to in the, in the metro area. I think he was here for a little more than an hour, hour and a half.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Trustee Cross.
Thank you. I know Trustee Muzel and Dr. Bennett and I had Senator Marshall here two or three years ago. He visited the Veterans Affairs Center. So I know he'd been here prior. I'm not the biggest fan of the man, but he has been a supporter of the college, and we do thank him for the support he's given us. So I'm glad he was here. I had another question for you. Why are incomes up? Why is income tax up so much?
Unemployment's very low right now in Kansas. I think that presents a lot of challenges for employers. I think wages are up, and so I think you're seeing that trend play out in the receipts that, that come into the Kansas coffers. Beyond that, I can't really explain, you know, the, the tax laws have changed somewhat with regard to corporate, and there's a lot of pass-through income still that, that goes on with, with LLCs and S Corps. And so the way that's treated could also be representative of why you see a downtick in corporate income tax.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? I have just a, a couple of things, Dick. You don't seem as alarmed about those tax numbers as I was when I read these numbers because when I read that there was a 40% below estimates of corporate income tax collections, that struck me as a lot. But maybe it's not, I, I'll be the first to admit, I don't understand a lot about tax policy, but would I be wrong to be thinking that what we're seeing here is more, more burden falling on individuals and less burden falling on businesses? Or is that a vast oversimplification?
Not necessarily. I, I think it does depend on, there's a, there's a large number of small businesses in Kansas, and they are, they do make up that category of LLCs or S Corps. And so because of the way those tax laws can be treated, and it can be pass-through income, you might see that on, on the corporate side versus on the, on the individual side. So that might be part of the reason for the increase in the individual side. There's also a lag, as I recall, one of the, one of the things that was a challenge was the, we call it the salt, state and local tax pair-up. There's a reporting period that's different for those numbers, and so they don't always reflect on the month-end reports based on the way they're, they're submitted or the way they come in. The number did look significant. It's $16 million. And so when you see 40-some percent in one, on one hand, and 16 million on the other, in the grand scheme of things, 16, 16 million is not a lot of dollars. And so they're, they're also comparing to what the expectations were supposed to be. They're also, they also compare year to year. And so if they, if it's typically down at that part of the, the year or that time of the month, that could be also part of the, the reason.
Okay. Well, thanks for that explanation, and I know that you'll keep us aware of it at any point. at any point. My alarm is no longer a false alarm. I also wanted to express some gratitude that we were able to get Senator Marshall here. As I'm sure you know, when we were back in DC earlier this year, he kind of at the last minute decided to do a group meeting of all Kansas colleges, community colleges, and not just us. And so we missed out on that opportunity because of his schedule to really get with him one-on-one. And I think it's so important for him to be here and recognize what it is that we're doing and how it may be a little bit different from what's happening across the state at other community colleges. And so I think it's great that he had an opportunity to visit, so.
Yeah, I certainly didn't mean to step on Dr. Mixa's toes because it very well may be included in his president's report to the board. But I would invite him to also add any, I mean, I think it was a very good conversation and a great opportunity to continue to build those relationships.
Yeah, yeah, very important. All right. Thank you for your report, Dick. Safe travels back to Topeka.
Thank you.
All right. Next on the agenda is the Shared Governance Report, and Kaitlin Crumsek. Good evening.
Hi, folks. I am Kaitlin Crumsek, Director of the Academic Achievement Center and Language Resource Center here on campus. And unlike at the legislature, we are very busy here preparing for the semester. So as is natural at this time of the year, some of our regular work is put on pause as we prepare to welcome students back to campus. So while groups like Staff Council and College Council have continued to meet, I think a lot of our collective energy this last month has been focused on enrolling students, finalizing course material, hiring staff, and generally preparing for the first day of the semester. So we were, we did have some updates yesterday at College Council, but we did take kind of a step back to look more broadly at the year ahead and discuss some of the goals that our groups have. So our College Council minutes will have a much more detailed list of our goals. I just wanted to highlight a few. So in Staff Council, we're going to be focusing on two main things this upcoming year: communication and processes, as well as outreach and engagement. In ABC, they foresee some topics like ADA compliance and AI tools as being dominant conversations in the next year. They would also like to put out a survey to see, just to kind of gauge the satisfaction of shared governance. And then finally, Cabinet talked to us about some of their focus, which is going to be the Strategic Bridge Plan, Facility Masters Plan, and then of course, AI. So I will use this report in the next year to bring you updates on all of those goals. The last thing I want to highlight, it may be one of my favorite things during PLD Week, and I mean this genuinely, and it's going to be the Campus Update Meeting. So Aunt Ernie, who is Staff Council Chair, Jamie Cunningham, ABC Chair, and then myself, along with the President's Office, we've worked together to put together an agenda that highlights some of the great work that's happening at the college and preview some of those important initiatives that are taking place in the next year. I think this meeting is one of the greatest tools that we have for communicating with college employees. And I hope that everyone can attend, or if they are not able to, they can view the recording later. I want to thank so many of the Cabinet members who are going to be present to share information at that meeting. And with that, my report is over and I will take any questions.
All right. Thank you for that. Any questions or comments for Kristen?
Kaitlin.
Kaitlin, sorry.
It's okay.
Trustee Smith-Everett.
As always. Thank you for being here. My question is, have we always had that meeting, the combined leaders of all that? I guess I don't recall it in the past. And has it always been recorded? Is it like available on the hub after? Or how do people access it?
Yeah. So the meeting has evolved over the last few years. ABC has their own faculty meeting, usually on Thursdays. We had a Staff Council meeting, or staff meeting hosted by Staff Council for a while. But about two years ago, we really combined our efforts. And we have this Campus Update Meeting that is for all employees. So it will follow Dr. Mixa's comments on Tuesdays, or on Tuesday. And it usually is recorded and then posted to Info Hub afterwards. Because we have many of our Student Services colleagues who are actively enrolling students and can't take some time out. And so it is available later for viewing.
Thank you. Love it.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Kaitlin, it sounds like you're really busy. So thank you for all your hard work. And this is an exciting time on campus every year, right, as we get to welcome in new students and returning students. So thanks for all you're doing. And thanks for your report.
Sure.
All right. Next up is the Faculty Association Report, and Dr. Irene Olivares.
Hello.
Hello, everyone. Yes, Irene Olivares. I am Associate Professor of History and FA President. I do want to add my congratulations to the Chlorella Cavaliers for all the work they did. And I'm so happy that they emphasized that they were competing with graduate students, I mean, and competed so brilliantly. And I want to celebrate Dr. Heather Seitz, FA Member, for all of her mentorship. And also congratulate FA Member Dr. Antle and his team for all of their work and sustainability. I do want to invite the board for the FA Welcome Back Celebration on Friday, August 29 from 5:30 to 7:30 at Quavira Park. We're trying out a park this time. So hopefully it won't be too hot. I'll let you all coordinate so you don't accidentally form a quorum if you all attend. In the rest of the report, I want to focus on our counselors because they have been hard at work, meeting with students, trying to get them ready for the fall semester. As everyone here is just, as Kaitlin said, everyone kind of drops and shifts things in order to make sure that everyone is ready to welcome the students and support them as they arrive on our campus. And I think we should take time to celebrate the work of our counselors. Our counseling model is very, unlike other models at other institutions. And I think that's a good thing. We are very unique. I think a counselor called themselves a unicorn in our counseling model. At other institutions, professionals in academic advising have a high turnover rate. An article from December of 2024, published in the National Academic Advising Association, more commonly known as NACADA, actually housed at K-State, reported that professionals who work in academic advising typically leave their profession after only three years. The top two reasons given for leaving the profession were low pay and poor work environment. One professional who participated in the study said, quote, "I love working with students and working in higher education, but I was tired of getting paid so little and being so underappreciated for the work I was doing," end quote. Another respondent said that their workplace was, quote, "a very toxic work environment, and I was also limited to what I could do beyond just the daily grind of academic advising," end quote. With these types of responses, I can understand why advising professionals leave their positions on average after only three years. At JCC, our counselors do not have this same high rate of turnover. Several of our counselors have been at the college for more than a decade. Many of you might remember Alicia Bradyhoff, who spoke to the board last spring, I believe it was in May. Alicia retired last year after 31 years working at the college in a variety of roles, but mostly as a counselor. She is just one example of the long-term, highly respected, and dedicated professionals in counseling. Our counselors are invested in our students. They offer holistic advising that considers the whole student, not just their academics, or what classes they need to take every semester. That's very important, right? Making sure that our students are following a pathway. I know Kathy and her team are working on that. And that's very important. But our counselors offer holistic advising. So that means they also take into account the student's personal and work circumstances so that they can best guide our students. Our counselors also meet with faculty from different academic program areas to know what students need to be working on to meet their goals. Because our counselors do not have a high rate of turnover, our counselors have developed close working relationships with teaching faculty and can work with them when there are changes to program requirements, or maybe the Kansas Board of Regents implements something new, right? So there's, they have that relationship to be able to work through all of these changes and processes. After reading the status of advising at other institutions, I keep going back to the point that our counseling model does not look like counseling models at other institutions. And I think that's a good thing. The college should continue to celebrate and continue to support this innovative approach that our counseling model represents across the community college scene, I believe, and really a higher end altogether. So I do want to recognize that our counselors are hard at work right now, enrolling all of our students, supporting them. And that is all for my report. And I'll stand here for questions.
All right. Thank you for your report. Any questions or comments for Dr. Olivares? Go ahead, Trustee Cross.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Professor Olivares, thank you for being here. And congratulations on all this good news tonight for FA members.
Oh, yes. I won't, I won't take credit for them, but when is here, yeah?
Thank you for all of your support of our students. I really appreciate it. And thank you for continuing the tradition of putting our students first to make sure that you work around their lives. It was critical for two students in my lives, my parents that came here non-traditionally. And I forget the nickname we have for the kids that hide out in the hallways, but I was one of those kids. So, you know, they have circumstances and life events, so thank you for working around that. And thank you for just making sure we put them first. So. I know you don't know what to do with that. I'm sorry I just grandstanded, but.
No, thank you. I'll take whatever I can take from them.
Any other questions or comments? Trustee Ratan.
I just want to say thank you for the onboarding and the welcome that you gave. You had about two dozen employees this week, new employees. And I could tell the care and the support that the FA is going to give them. So thanks for that. I know it wasn't in your report, but thank you.
Yeah. Yesterday was a blur. But yes.
I wanted to add one more thing, thank you, that Dawn had to say. And that is, the enthusiasm in that room that you guys created in that onboarding was pretty amazing. And my guess is that a lot of people signed up to join.
We saw good numbers, yes. But really, we're there because we do provide that linkage and that support. Because sometimes it's hard to, I think someone said yesterday, we are a community college, but because we're all very busy and we're in different parts of the campus, sometimes the community gets lost in the community college. And so the FA, we do try to provide that linkage, that support across the college.
And you guys did a great job of presenting that in a, in a way that people really heard it and listened to it. Because there were some firsthand experiences that really made a difference, I think.
I'll convey that to the folks who spoke. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? It's always a pleasure to hear your report. Thank you so much. And as we gear up to have students return to campus, you know, thanks to you and all of your colleagues for everything you do. We appreciate it.
And to everyone on campus. Thank you very much.
Okay. That takes us to the Johnson County Education Research Triangle Report, and Trustee Smith-Everett.
Thank you. J-Cert received, I'll just put the glasses on, Laura. Okay. J-Cert received $2.3 million in sales tax in July 2025 and distributed $800,000 to each of the three university entities. July sales tax receipts were 6.3% higher than the same time last year, with cumulative receipts through July being 4.4% higher on average year-to-date for 2024. We transferred $50,000 more to each university entity in July than in July 2024. So each university entity has received about an even $5 million through July, which is $213,000 more year-to-date than that same period in 2024, and is the earliest in the year total that has been over $5 million. So we've never reached that $5 million threshold this early in the J-Cert financial calendar. And that concludes my report. That's it.
Okay. It was a rapid ending.
Yep.
All right. Questions? Trustee Cross.
I can look it up. But who is the person from KU Edwards that always says, "Bed on Johnson County?"
Uh-huh. That is our member, Roy Jensen.
I'm still on those emails.
You know Roy Jensen?
Yes, I do.
Vice Chancellor. Yes.
It's good news. Thank you.
It's, I mean, it's been a year where every month, we seem to have higher and higher percentage. Last year, or last month was real high. It was like 8%. But on average, Johnson Countyans are spending more out in stores. And so J-Cert reaps the benefits for that. And unfortunately, we don't get that benefit from J-Cert, but our job is to oversight. So you can just ask any member of KU Edwards, or K-State, or the University of Kansas Research, what they're doing with the money next time you see them, you know, out in a van. Just ask them straight out. You'll be fine.
It's an amazing collaboration.
It is. It is. And they're doing some pretty great things. Yeah.
Well, I can't say as I'm surprised to learn that Johnson Countyans are spending more, because I know I'm spending more every time I go to buy groceries, or gas, or whatever it is. So there's that. But thank you for your report. Always good news to hear that there are more funds to be allocated out for those important projects. Next up, and I'm not going to forget this time, is the Kansas Association of Community Colleges Report. Trustee Cross.
Thank you, Madam Chair. KACC met in person at Cali County College in Arc City on August 1st and 2nd. All colleges were represented. Dr. Mixa and I were there in person. And thank you, again, to Trustee Hamill for covering in May in Highlands. Thank you. Cali staff presented the Best Practices in Data Management and Student Success Initiatives and Financial Management. This is a meeting recap, Madam Chair, I'm sorry. A follow-up discussion was held on property tax trends in Kansas and how community colleges, and how community college counties rank in taxes compared to others. One participant asked why we simply didn't just tax the service areas for the counties, or for the counties in which the colleges serve. I think it was a very good question. And it was something to propose. Because Senator Larry Alley, who I don't know, but my state Senator Ethan Corson said is a good guy, spoke to the group about the needs of the Kansas workforce, an idea he has related to sales tax funding for education. He was also recognized for his outstanding contributions to the community colleges during the past legislative session. And our executive director, Heather Morgan, did say he really went to the mat for us. And it is often a wrestling match in the state budget process to get the budget we need and wrestle it away from the regions. Our good friends at the regions, but sometimes our competitors in the state budget process. So we thank Senator Alley and all of his allies for what they did to make sure we have the money we need. Heather Morgan gave a lengthy federal update related to the budget and policy changes, as well as reviewed the latest memo from the U.S. Attorney General Pam Bondi related to issues which colleges need to pay attention to in ensuring that they are following federal discrimination guidance. I know that week UCLA had gotten tagged with stuff they may or may not have been doing, but the administration perceives they did. So the memo provides guidance on how to avoid, quite candidly and point-blank, she says, administrative attention. So. A report was given by President Amber Nottingen about the president's meeting, including discussions of new innovative degree offerings in various specific fields that boards of trustees may be asked about to consider. And I have this article here. It's a lengthy website that I can provide to anybody that wants it. President Amber Nottingen also covered the agreement the community colleges made about suggestions to improve Senate Bill 155 efficiency. Also presented were student loan default rates per college. Each college needs to determine their current default rate and work to lower the percent of students in default. Colleges who exceed 30% for two of the next three years could lose their ability to access federal financial aid, and schools above 40% could lose access more quickly. Regardless of the percentage of default, colleges will have the option to appeal, but this is a serious issue that needs attention. And here are two news stories that Heather provided below in this update for me, that again, I can provide to any of you later. And a quick note on that point, I don't think that's us in terms of default rates. We're nowhere near 30%, are we?
I just remember we're in the good category.
Yeah, I looked for Dr. McLeod. I'm sorry to call Dr. Gerb. But we're, we're okay, right?
That would be a question for, like, Shelly Allen?
Excuse me. I'm sorry.
Yeah.
We're in the good range.
We're in the good range, yeah.
But some of our colleagues in sister schools may not be. And so it's an issue for them and an issue nationwide. So just to be aware for all of you. The business meeting was held, which included the approval of the financials and minutes, as well as discussion of moving future KACC meetings to Thursday, late afternoon, evening, and Friday format. Really, so many of us don't lose time with our families was really the issue. A vote would be held in December related to the movement of the meetings from the Friday, Saturday format to the Thursday, Friday formats. And also is announced, if a trustee is interested in running for an office, to let Heather know whether two weeks prior to the December meeting. I think she meant for offices within the association. So those are available for you. We do have upcoming meetings. We'll meet December 5th and 6th in Garden City, Garden City Community College, next April. There'll be a meeting by Zoom. But usually we have our luncheon in Topeka. And then there's other meetings scheduled for next year. I think that concludes my report. I asked Gerb the wrong person the wrong question. So, Madam Chair, thank you.
You're welcome. That was a great report. You're welcome. That was a great report. A lot packed in there. Any questions or comments for trustee Cross? I would just say this, and you know, there's no, I suppose, point in belaboring it, but there's a lot happening with respect to Heather Morgan's discussion about the guidelines that the attorney generals come out with and things related to trying to hold campuses accountable for the default rates of their students on student loans. And we all just need to be paying attention to that to make sure that we're doing absolutely everything we can to preserve the financial aid for our students, to make sure that they can get the education that they want.
And I don't mean to interrupt you or take away your ending commentary as chair, but I think what I did want to say was, I'm not sure, sometimes we live in this heightened political climate. I think the administration is on some level continuing policy we've seen since the Bush administration, cracking down on for-profits and other people that are taking advantage of student default, you know, getting GIs or other students on, you know, into private organizations that are taking advantage of them for student loans. So I think on some level, it's good news and I'm trying to sell this in the best possible light. But I don't know that that's directed at us or even, I didn't mean to suggest any of our other schools in the state. I just think that the administration is trying to do what every administration I've seen in my adult life do, so.
That was a great resounding defense. So that was awesome. Thank you.
I can make their case better than they can, but they don't pay me.
All right. Thank you for your report. Appreciate it and appreciate you attending that meeting for us.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Mixa.
And Dr. Mixa, you as well.
Have a good time.
Next up is the foundation report. Trustee Ratan.
Hello. Just a reminder that Some Enchanted Evening is coming up. The committee met on August 6th. Individual tickets are still available for purchase at jccc.edu/SEE. Income is at 103% over goal. So far, we've raised $1.23 million. 58% of tables are sold. Several student-centered programs will be highlighted at the event and the Johnson Countyan of the Year reception is scheduled for September 3rd at OPCC. Trustees are invited to attend. Thank you, Joy. The JCCC Foundation hosted a welcome reception for Dr. Mixa and his wife Deb yesterday at the Wiley Hospitality and Culinary Academy. Close to 200 community leaders attended. Harvest Dinner is sold out and the income goal has been exceeded. We added a sponsor this year, which helped us raise more funds than ever for this event. This year, the chef is a JCCC culinary graduate and head chef at Lulus Southern Cookhouse in the Crossroads. Fun story, he graduated from the culinary program and his wife got her business degree from here as well and she manages his catering business. A fantastic JCCC success story. The new board slate has been approved for JCCC Foundation Executive Committee and Board of Directors. New to the executive committees are Pat McCown from McCown Gordon Construction, Marcia or Marcia Yoker from JE Dunn and Rich Muller from Van Trust. Tim McKee of the Olathe Chamber is our new president of the board and one new director has joined, Nancy Ingram. Here's a link to our four board. If you need it, we can have it sent out. Save the date for September 17th, 11:30 to 1:00 and Capital Fed for the Rainier Center for the Foundation Scholarship Luncheon. And SIPS and Scholarships was amazing. The student speaker was very eloquent, telling her story and the impact of the JCCC Foundation Scholarships on her life. There is a video of her speaking, which I'll ask and request to be sent out to trustees. And that concludes my report.
Always love getting your report. Trustee Cross.
Yeah, I just wanted to say congratulations to my friend and our former colleague, trustee Ingram, for that appointment. And also, on or about July 31st, 2025 at 5:14 PM, I sent to a member of the foundation that trustee Greg Mitchell and his wife Deanne Mitchell will be my guests at the Harvest Dinner. So I have the email. I don't want to embarrass whoever, but called to the carpet. I defend.
Okay, trustee Smith Everett.
I apologize. I did not get the date of the gala, but I'm filling my fall calendar. Can you repeat it?
It actually wasn't in here, but it is.
November?
I thought it was.
November 8th. It's November 8th.
And will there be birthday cake for my husband or do I have to bring my own on that day? Can you ask?
We'll get him cake.
Right.
We'll get him cake.
It's not a big one, so I mean, you know, it's not a big monumental birthday, but it is a birthday. So that's going to be. The other thing I wanted to say real quick is just kudos to the leadership, which is directly, is completely Joy Ginsburg on our foundation. Event after event, are exceeding goals. And one of the things she said when she, sorry, for our audiovisual team, there's like a kickback echo. Up here, if there is anybody that can fix that, it is really difficult for me, maybe, just me. I don't know. It's just a me problem.
It's there.
Um, I apologize.
Did you hear?
Joy, when she first came, she spoke with us, Dawn, I don't know if you remember, we met. And one of the things she talked about was she really wanted to zero in on doing fewer targeted fundraising activities. That's almost worse, whatever that is. I feel like it's worse now, sorry. But being more effective with them.
More intentional.
And real intentional with our fundraising. I think the Harvest Dinner is a great example. The SIPS and Scholarships is a great example. And we are already, what'd you say, 1.?
103% over our goal.
103% over our goal for Some Enchanted Evening. Just incredible work on her part, leadership, and I just want to give her kudos for that because our students reap the benefits when we get our community behind this college and the things we do. And that is, she absolutely champions that and makes it so much, so much fun to be part of. So just wanted to say that.
Joy is a rock star.
Trustee Cross.
I concur. And her husband yesterday had a tag on his shirt that said Mr. Joy.
Ginsburg. Mr. Joy.
I think Joy is great. I also just wanted to note and thank Kate Allen and everyone else at the foundation. And I believe it was Dr. Sobcek was there for many years before he came on as Executive Vice President of Finance. So I agree, it's a different strategy and a wonderful one and a great one. But just recognizing everyone that's done every great work over there.
Any other comments? I would echo your kudos to Joy Ginsburg for sure. I had an opportunity, as did several of you, to be at the reception for you and your wife yesterday. And what an opportunity for us to see the leaders of our community really turn out to welcome you and your wife. But really, it's a testament to their high regard for this institution. And it was a tremendous celebration and your wife is great behind the microphone, right? So it was a wonderful event and something that the foundation was able to put together. And I already have my table for Some Enchanted Evening, so you need to get your tickets.
Not on it yet.
All right. And does that conclude your report? I'm sorry.
That concludes my report. Thank you.
Perfect. That takes us to our committee reports and recommendations. And first up is the audit committee. I had an obligation, was not able to attend. So trustee Smith Everett, you carried the torch for me, so you get to give the report.
All right. Sounds great. The Audit Committee met at 12:00 PM on Wednesday, August 6th, right here in this room. Jeff Johnson, the Director of Audit and Advisory Services, presented the annual trustee travel report for fiscal year 2025. And he noted that travel expenses incurred by us, right here on this board, were for same-day and overnight travel appear to be reasonable and directly related to the conduct of college business. Next, the committee received a quarterly projects update from the director. Mr. Johnson shared enhancements to the Ethics Report Line, including changes to ethics, case input forums, new promotional posters installed across campus, wallet cards distributed in offices and during new employee orientation, and updated information posted on Info Hub. I will pause right there to say, when this happens, where we're promoting Ethics Report Line, which was pretty frequently used, at least had more, a higher user participation pre-COVID and then has really dipped off, when you get this kind of promotional stuff back out, we're going to expect to see, and I just wanted to warn this board, a lot more reporting because people are aware that we have a report line and a way for them to report. And so Jeff agreed and concurred that that is probably going to happen now that we've put all this promotional information for people about our Ethics Report Line. For incoming audits, Mr. Johnson informed the committee that the department is in the planning phase of the JCCC Foundation Audit. He also introduced Rachel Hansen, the senior auditor to the committee. For the upcoming quarter, priorities include completing the annual audit risk assessment, developing the annual audit plan, attending two professional conferences, the Gartner Enterprise Risk Audit and Compliance Conference. What is that abbreviation? GRAC? And the Association of College and University Auditors Conference. The committee then reviewed the audit recommendations, follow-up matrix of the eight open recommendations at the start of the quarter. Five have been closed and three remain in the process. Mr. Johnson also presented an Ethics Report Line update covering April 24 to July 28, 2025, as well as fiscal year totals. He informed us that the new reporting format has been adopted, which would provide the committee with information on the level of utilization of the reporting tool by all users within the college. During this period, 76 reports were received, 65 from identified reporters and 11 from anonymous reporters. As of July 28, 37 of those cases have been closed, 39 remain in process. Finally, the committee reviewed and recommends that the board approve of the fiscal year 2026 Audit Committee Working Agenda. And so I will make that recommendation, which is in your board packet, page 3.
Do I have a motion?
Yes. Sorry, I'm making that motion is what I meant to say. Yes, that.
Motion made by trustee Smith Everett, seconded by trustee Cross. Any discussion about the working agenda? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six to zero. You may continue.
Thank you. The next meeting of the Audit Committee will be right here in this room on November 6th, two days before our Some Enchanted Evening Gala. Now I know. And that concludes my report.
All right. Thank you for your report. Any questions or comments for trustee Smith Everett? I'm glad that you provided the information about why we're going to see an uptick in ethics report numbers. And, you know, at least from my perspective, I see that as a good thing. And we can't fix what we don't know about. And so, you know, the more we know about potential issues, the more we have an opportunity to address them. So I think it's great that people are going to use the hotline more. And I know Jeff's been working really hard to sort of revamp that whole process. So it looks like it's working.
Yes.
So excellent. All right. Moving on, next up is our Board Governance Committee Report. And I believe trustee Cross, you are giving that report.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. The Board Governance Committee met at 11:45 AM on Wednesday, August 6, 2025, in GEB 137, and I happened to show up. Kelsey Nazar led the review on the 100 Series Board Policies, number and selection of Board Policy 111.01, Officers' Policy 111.02, Committee's Policy 111.03. The Board Governance Committee did not propose changes to the number and selection of the trustees' policy or the officers' policy. The committee proposed changes to the committee policy and the redline changes can be found on page 5 of the board packet. It is the recommendation of the Board Governance Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve modification to the committee's policy 111.03 as shown subsequently in the board packet. Can I so move?
Motion made by trustee Cross.
Did I say that right? It says 11.03.
It's 111, yeah.
Yeah, but it's 111. Okay.
Yep.
Motion made by trustee Cross. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Jennings. Any discussion about the proposed changes?
I do.
Trustee Smith Everett.
Okay, so this is where I think we scratched out the board self-evaluation. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay, so talk to me about that discussion or why we are.
I told them not to do it. I told them not to do it. I knew you'd have an issue with it. They laughed at me. They thought I was off the wall or I fell out of the wrong tree. And I said, I don't care. I don't want to do it. You can blame me. I don't want to do it. And I don't want to do the self-evaluation. You know that. We've had disagreements on this. But Greg thought because since we weren't doing it, that it made sense to strike it from the policy since we weren't actually doing it. So it was his idea.
Okay, it's all him, the guy that's not here. Got it.
I told him to blame me, but I seconded the motion so Kelsey could advance it to this committee, the whole, for your consideration, our consideration. And I concurred with trustee Mitchell because we weren't actually doing it, that it made sense to strike it from the policy. I think we answer and sit before the people of Johnson County every two and four years. So I think I directly cracked. President Trump doesn't do self-evaluations and neither should we, so.
Okay, I don't know about that correlation, but I'm going to go back on my soapbox about this because you know, as a founding member of Board Governance, I'm.
I did tell them not to do it. I said, just leave it alone. She doesn't know any different.
I'm passionate about this. I know we've never done it. This has come up several times. I've served six years. We're still, this still comes up and we haven't gotten it together. However, it doesn't take away from the fact that our trustee association, ACCT, says it is a good policy that the board self-evaluate at the same time that you're evaluating your president or within close proximity. My argument is if we strike it, we will never, you know, if I dive off a cliff tonight, who is going to remember this but me? Because trustee Cross is going to say, get rid of it. She's gone. Let's go. I'm just saying, I know we have not used it and done it, but I would like it to be there because it's a goal of ours and should be a goal that we self-reflect around the same time that we're evaluating our president because our governing association, ACCT, or not governing association, but association, says that that is the gold standard for boards and how that they ensure they're conducting the best policies and procedures for themselves. That's my argument.
Madam Chair, may I?
Go right ahead. Trustee Cross and then trustee Jennings.
I thank the trustee for her comments and her discussion, and she makes a valid and good argument. How about this, Madam Chair, if I may suggest, I withdraw my motion. And I feel ambushed by the administration on this one. I know they gave me notice and stuff, but I just didn't pay attention. So why don't we send it back to committee for further consideration and perhaps leave it in place for now?
Well, that would involve a whole new round of motions. So before we go there, trustee Jennings, you had a comment to make.
I did. And trustee Cross has spoken for himself. Trustee Mitchell's not here, but I was there when they were talking about that in the committee. And it was my understanding that trustee Mitchell felt like if we're not doing it, it shouldn't be a policy because we're not doing the policy. I mean, that seemed to be his take on that. So just add a comment.
Well, I'd like to say this before I try to figure out the procedural mechanism to address your comment. I think it's important to note that the fact that it's not in our policy saying we have to do it every year doesn't mean that it's not going to happen. It just means that we're not going to be in violation of the policy when we don't do it. And I think it's not necessarily a good thing for us to have a policy that we as a board are not following. And along those lines, there are myriad of things going on around the campus at any given moment that might impact our ability to do this particular thing. For example, we've spent the past year and a half in a state of flux and a presidential search and we've just gotten our new president on board and now we're about to have an election. And so I'm in favor of taking this out of the policy, not because I disagree with doing it, but because I don't like the idea of this board being in violation of the policy, simply because we haven't had the time or the mechanism to devote to this. And quite candidly, I guess I would get on my soapbox also and say this. This is one of the best functioning boards that I've ever been a part of. And I feel like we all have open lines of communication. We all know what it is that we're supposed to do. We all seem to be doing that and I. We all seem to be doing that, and, and I, I'll just leave it there. But do you want to proceed with making a motion to withdraw the recommendation?
Well, all kidding aside, and I hope people in this room know I was kidding. The administration didn't ambush me. They, they wouldn't do that. I think it's an interesting point that the trustee raises, and I, it occurs to me, being an amateur wordsmith, that we could change the language, potentially to say, and the board may conduct a self-evaluation process, so that we're not in violation and we just have the option.
I like that.
To conduct an evaluation process. And I'm working to reach a compromise here and there. I've created a mess for you and I'm sorry about that, but I'm trying to have an honest discussion, so. I'll be quiet.
If I can. I appreciate your comments about our current board, and I agree completely. However, serving with now, this is the third iteration of this board, as I have two members of this board, and I have shared experience where the board wasn't functioning. And it was, it would have been a nice mechanism to be able to have some internal dialogue about that and what we could do better to serve our college because it caused quite a bit of a mess campus-wide when this board wasn't functioning. And I always believe policies should outlive the people in the seats. I don't disagree with you that if, if we kept it as is, we're keeping something in there that we know we're not going to necessarily get to. And I welcome Trustee Cross's compromise because I think that would be a great way to keep it there so that well after members of this board are gone, that's still something that's held as a important part of our own board governance. Which I've always said on this board publicly and privately, we have not been good at mechanisms to manage ourselves, and this is one of the mechanisms that ACCT recommends for self-reflection and evaluation.
Okay, here's what I would propose.
Trustee Mitchell just joined. Just wanted to let you know so you could acknowledge him in a minute.
Okay. Trustee Mitchell, are you up in the sky?
I am. Can you hear me?
Hello? Trustee Mitchell, can you hear us?
Yeah, I'm, I'm here.
You hear me now?
You can't hear me?
He told me he could hear us.
Okay, well, here's what I would propose, and I don't know if, if Trustee Mitchell's going to be able to weigh in or not, but I think we need to deal with the recommendation that's on the table first. And so what I would propose is that we take a vote on that recommendation. If that recommendation does not pass, then you're free to introduce a second recommendation that would include the alternative language that you've proposed, and we can have a discussion and vote on that. Yes, Trustee Hamel.
Yeah, if I may, so the idea of having, I do like the idea of possibly doing the may, and I do understand the person you were talking about and the situation, and it was palpable even watching it on video, some of the situations going on, and I've heard many stories about it. I'm curious to know how that would help the situation exactly. Is my, I don't, I don't know if it would help or not, and if you can convince me that it would help, I'm, I'm all for it. I'm not sure that it would help, and that's the part that makes me not really sure where I want to go with this exactly.
So the, what we should be doing is ACCT already has a tool to do this for self-evaluation. We have just never followed through on getting it and using it. In it, it has us evaluate ourselves based on the principles that ACCT lays out for good trustee management and board governance. It does, it's not, it's, it's not going to fix a rogue trustee. There's no, there's no solution for that that works. What it allows is the board to recalibrate on what the standard is for good board governance, good trustee conduct, and allows the board itself to be able to go into executive session to be able to have the conversation about what we can do better or what we're needing to improve on. And from that alone, one of the things that happened with the last time we had, you know, a really split board was we were not able to have conversations about how we needed to move forward and do the business of the college. So it's not necessarily going to solve anything.
Yeah. So my thought is, you know, we could be still, if we had some, an issue like that, we could still have an executive session discussion with or without that policy, right?
I'm not sure that that's correct, and I want to clarify a couple of things. First of all, and then I'll get to you guys, I know that you're waiting. Am I correct that this is a product that ACCT sells and that there's a cost involved?
Good question.
And they perform this service? I believe that's right. Trustee Mitchell, can you hear us?
He's texting me.
Okay.
Yes, I can hear you.
I believe that that's accurate, that this is a product that they sell and they provide this service, and it's at a cost. I don't know what that cost is.
I think that's right.
If I may, go ahead.
Yeah, they can provide it, but it is a service.
It is a service that they provide. So it's something they're, they're trying to sell. Yes.
Yes, it's a service. I mean, in defense of, perhaps of Trustee Smith Everett and others, it, it's simply one option, one vendor.
Sure.
We pick usually outside ACCT recommended search firms when we do a presidential search or whatever. So we could conduct it in-house, for example.
Yep.
And I, I think if I made the Trustee Hamel's point and Trustee Smith Everett, Trustee Hamel's questioned Trustee Smith Everett's point, it simply would have been a tool or some, we often fail, and I have fond memories of everyone who served on this board and everyone, but this is among the best boards I've been on, and every single one of you have committed substantively to what, what we do here. I appreciate that. But I think Trustee Smith Everett was saying that it would have been another tool or something for us to analyze. So at least six of us knew what to do, to be honest with you. And I had to be taught, had to be mentored by Trustee Cook and Trustee Musial and Ingram and others, Lindstrom, all of you. But sometimes we're not sure what will sink in, and all of you have asked me questions over the years, and you flatter me coming to me from my experience, and I appreciate that, including you. So I'm just saying, it, I think to Trustee Smith Everett's point, it's just a tool and something we have to address and work through a situation. It's not going to solve, and it wouldn't have solved the problem back then.
The other question I had, and then I'll get to you, Trustee Ratan. Thank you for that, Trustee Cross. Can this be done in executive session? Yeah, no, this is not an executive session discussion. So this would be an open discussion that we would be having, and everything would be an open record. There's no exception to Koma or Cora that would provide for this to be conducted in executive session, nor necessarily should it be.
No, and I agree with you. I'm sorry to, to talk over you, and I think Ms. Nazar could correct me, Mrs. Nazar, but I think Trustee Hamel's point is valid, and if it was a corporate board, and I'm not a corporate board expert exactly, but I think he's just simply trying to resolve it so we don't have a public...
It was me that said that?
...out, overspill of airing our dirty laundry. But I think you're right. We would have to do it in public and just air this out. We work to resolve a lot of conflicts prior to board meetings, but I, I don't know the answer here, just to keep talking. Like if you, I, I talked to Trustee Jennings about simply withdrawing the motion and maybe making a new motion, or if you want to vote on this motion, I, I'm open to whatever you want to do.
Trustee Ratan.
I feel like the assessment gives us guardrails and talking points and the guide to productive talking points. So we could assess, which I think we should if we want to be a high-performing board, we should assess and see where we can do better. But to, it could devolve, and like you said, it's depending upon who's in the room. But I do support a assessment. I was on the Board Governance Committee a year or two ago, and we did talk about doing it as part of a retreat. And it's also just nice to know, you may rate different than me, and the, the meat is in between why you rated something a one and I rated it a four, and in between that delta is the discussion and the quality that comes out of it, and we are more aware of the impact of our actions.
Yeah. My error on that, and I apologize.
No, that's okay.
I knew, well, yeah.
Trustee Jennings.
So my support of it would be that it, it gives us all kind of the same standards that we're targeting, and then we assess because we know what we're kind of shooting for.
Right.
And, and that's always very beneficial.
I think it's one of those things for me that I've learned that we come in, we all run for office, as Trustee Cross said. We come in with different perspectives and what we think are different agendas, and when you do that and you do it together as a board, you recalibrate what the standard of a high-performing board is, which allows you to better serve the community that we're serving, and that's what I always want to do for this institution, so.
Trustee Mitchell, can you, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we finally can hear you.
Okay, so we got through the technological issue and we're good to go.
Okay, so my question for you is, Trustee Cross has asked that we, that he be allowed to withdraw the recommendation, but before I think we make a decision on that, I'd like to know if you are aligned with that decision to withdraw the motion.
Yeah, I'll tell you, my only concern about this in the first place was that it's something we're not doing. And I, I come from a world where if you have a policy, you, you do it. So in healthcare, you, you could potentially lose your accreditation if you have a policy that says we'll do X, Y, and Z, and you don't do it. So short of a legal requirement to, to have this as a policy, I, I, my mindset was we probably shouldn't. But I, I think that what I heard of the discussion was we would withdraw and then reconsider making a modification to the redlines that were presented. Is that correct?
Yeah, I, can we just withdraw the motion? Can we do that and then make a new recommendation? Okay, yeah, I think that's what...
Yeah, I'd be good with that.
That's what's being proposed. Okay.
So Madam Chair, I, I will withdraw the motion formally.
Okay, the motion is withdrawn. Do you have another recommendation to make?
Chair, before Trustee Cross makes another motion, is there a possibility that we could discuss some alternative language, simply because...
Yes.
To achieve the same goal, but simply because the, the sentence is saying what the Board Governance Committee oversees. It's not a directive to have a, a self-evaluation. And so I'm wondering if, if you could leave the language where it says, additionally, the committee will oversee the board development, new trustee onboarding, and then return the and the board self-evaluation process, but then leave on an annual basis to ensure a high-performing board's off, and add in when directed by the board chair. So that way it, you're not necessarily doing it on an annual basis, but there's the flexibility for the board chair to direct the Board Governance Committee to oversee a self-evaluation process.
Yeah, thank you for that. I, I think that's the problem with this language, is it, because it says on an annual basis, it does appear to be a directive.
Correct.
And so if the language comes out that says on an annual basis, so I believe what Kelsey is proposing is that we stop at processes. So it would read, additionally, the committee will oversee board development, comma, new trustee onboarding, comma, and the board self-evaluation processes. I would probably recommend we stop there.
If I may, sorry.
Yes.
I, I don't oppose that, and I, as I'm processing the why, I had anticipated in my mind, leaving all the language as it is and simply inserting, and the board may conduct, just add may conduct, or may conduct and a self-evaluation process on annual basis. But what I hear you saying is essentially giving the chair the tool to have that in their pocket if they need to for proper governance.
And that's one solution. My concern is that the sentence is essentially a series of things that the Board Governance Committee is supposed to oversee. So it, it doesn't necessarily, it's not intending to, I mean, I agree, the annual, the annual language is concerning in terms of whether or not it's a directive to the board, but it's supposed to be a series of actions of the Board Governance Committee.
Yeah, and it's not directing the Board Governance Committee to conduct anything.
Right.
Just to oversee these processes when they occur.
I sleep fine at night. I don't care.
Can you read it one more time? What you, what yours, or can you read it, what the change was?
Sure, so that last sentence would read, and again, I don't want to make the recommendation for the Board Governance Committee, and potentially this needs to go back to committee, but...
I said that too.
Additionally, the committee will oversee board development, comma, new trustee onboarding, comma, and the board self-evaluation processes.
That you're recommending...
I think that works, or you could say...
As directed by...
As directed by the board chair.
Yeah, I'm fine with either of those if you want to make that.
I think if we, if I may, sorry. If we add as directed by the board chair, it just gives an arrow for the board chair to use. I think it's a suggestion of Mrs. Nazar that we, having been the board chair, having never, really never wanting to be board chair again, it's an interesting tool, right? I mean, then, here's the issue, right? And I made this argument in the committee, and Trustee Hamel and Jennings could back me up. My concern is this, is that if we conduct an evaluation process, it, it highly suggests that it would be done on paper and that there'd be documents, and then if we, and the political parties play on this board and every other nonpartisan race, in all actuality, just to say that loud. I don't want it to devolve into some Cora race to get the records, what did everybody say? I hate Trustee Hamel, and I had a bad review, or I hate Trustee Cross, and, you know, they're going after how much I don't show up. So that's my concern. We function in a collegial manner. I, I'm not opposed to giving the chair the option, but then, you know, right, honest, if, if the wrong chair ordered me to do it, I'm not going to do it. If you ask me, I'd probably do it. I don't want you mad at me. But does that make sense? I'm just, I'm worried, I think Trustee Hamel said it, it can devolve.
It makes complete sense. It's my concern as well. I completely echo everything you've said. So what, the motion's been withdrawn. How would you like to proceed? Would you like to make a new recommendation, or do you want to just leave the motion withdrawn and go back to committee?
If I, if I may suggest, and I don't mean to offend the trustee, any of you, but I think it needs to go back to committee to give our staff and then Trustee Mitchell and I the opportunity to review it, and then we can get through it and just survive in advance tonight. So I'm, I'm sorry for the trouble, but that, that would be my, my thoughts right now.
Okay, I think that's a great idea.
I like it.
Did you have anything else in your report?
Trustee Smith Everett keeps the policy.
Like, I'm not trying to, I know, I get it. I just want to say, and I'm going to say it again and again, yes, currently, this board right now is amazing, and every person on here is doing it for the right intentions. We both have the experience that that's not always the case. What mechanisms do we have to get the board pulled back in, get focused on what the real job is, and make sure that we don't have rogue members derailing the governance of this board? I will also say I will do my duty to get you the information about what it actually looks like so that the members are fully informed by your next committee meeting, so that you guys know what the tool would, because of course, an entity like ACCT has thought about all that, the confidentiality, the, the, using the tool for ill and all that. So there, there are some things in place with their tool or their recommendation for doing it that would answer some of those questions.
Madam Chair. Yes, Trustee Cross.
If I can just respond to that. What we could do, here's my three favorite things. One, prayer. Two, secular education. And three, democracy. So like we'd have another election coming up to try to straighten out what's going on. So I, I share her concerns, and I, again, I think the committee should review it, and then, I do have more to my report, actually. It's not much.
Okay.
You asked earlier, sorry.
All right. Are we, are we done? And I do think Trustee Mitchell is working on coming up with some additional information about the ACCT tool and some other things. I don't want to speak for him, but I think he's doing that. All right, that concludes your report, Trustee Cross.
No.
No? Go right ahead.
Trustee Mitchell led the discussion on the process for trustee self-review evaluation. It was determined that Trustee Mitchell would have a follow-up conversation with Chair Ral to discuss the potential plan. That concludes your report.
Okay.
Somebody wrote that. I want to make sure I got it.
Next up is the Employee Engagement and Development Committee Report, and Trustee Ratan.
We have several recommendations coming up. Thank you, Mrs. Chair. The Employee Engagement and Development Committee met on Wednesday, August 6, 2025, at 10:50 a.m. Under compensation planning, Christina McGee, Vice President, Human Resources, presented an update to the compensation plan regarding how a full-time exempt employee records their leave. The current language has complicated the reporting of leave and caused some confusion. As a result, the statement was changed to remove the two-hour increment language in order to simplify... to simplify the reporting process. Mrs. McGee presented an additional update to the compensation plan regarding shift differential, callback, and on-call pay. The college intended to provide shift differential to all part-time employees to include part-time temporary and part-time regular. The current language can be misinterpreted to indicate that only part-time regular employees are eligible. The language was updated to provide clarity to show that all part-time employees are eligible for the shift differential. A recommendation was made by the Employee Engagement and Development Committee regarding approving revisions for the exempt leave reporting as follows. It is a recommendation of the Employee Engagement and Development Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to replace the current language contained in the compensation plan regarding exempt employee leave and shift differential, callback, and on-call pay with the modified language as presented in the board packet.
Are you making that motion?
Yes.
Motion made by trustee Ratan, seconded by trustee Hamel. Any discussion on the changes to the compensation plan? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries seven to zero. You may proceed.
Ms. McGee also provided an overview of the current tuition reduction program in eligible employee groups. In order to assist with employee recruitment and retention and help aid in the distribution of work-study funding, it was proposed to modify the current tuition reduction program to include part-time temporary and work-study employee groups as eligible employee groups for tuition reduction. The intent is to encourage these groups to be able to take advantage of this benefit and hopefully incentivize the groups to apply for these positions and retain current employees in the part-time temporary and student-worker positions. The estimated additional cost of including these employee groups is $130,000 for fiscal year 2026. This will be covered through a student success initiatives grant for FY '26. In FY '27, the full cost will be covered by the general fund. Additional funding will be required at approximately $170,000 per fiscal year. A recommendation was made by the Employee Engagement and Development Committee regarding approving revisions for shift differentials follows. It is the recommendation of the Employee Engagement and Development Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to accept the modification to the tuition reduction benefit to add part-time employee, part-time temporary, and student workers as eligible employee groups. I assume.
Second.
I have like five seconds. Motion made by trustee Ratan, seconded by trustee Smith Everett. Any discussion? Trustee Smith Everett.
I think this is excellent and a really wonderful way to honor our part-time employees. A benefit like this can make all the difference for them achieving their goals. So thank you for bringing it forward to us.
Agreed.
Any other discussion?
I'll say, this is really exciting. This is great. I was actually talking to a potential student and Jason, looking for a job and trying to convince him and talking about getting free tuition. I saw it happen right there as a real possibility for one class. So, yeah, I'm excited about it.
Great. Any other discussion? I would echo that. Tremendous idea, great incentive, great benefit. So with that.
I did have one addition. I had asked who uses it more, whether it's the dependents or the actual employee. And thank you to Ms. McGee for getting the information back to us, that the majority of people who take advantage of this benefit are the dependents, are the family of the employee. So thank you.
It's good information to have. Thank you. Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Yes. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. You may proceed. And I would like to suggest or offer that potentially we have a number of related insurance recommendations here. If you'd like to bundle them, we can do that.
Assumme.
Second.
I have a motion. Well, I think I need to know what we're bundling before we vote on it. So I have a motion by trustee Cross, a second by trustee Hamel, and what motions are we trying to bundle here, trustee Ratan?
One motion is to renew and retain the Blue Cross Blue Shield Kansas City contract for the Employee Medical Group Insurance from January 1, 2026 to December 31.
I'm going to interrupt you for just a second. I just want to know which, a list of the recommendations, and then we'll vote on whether or not to approve them.
Medical insurance, dental insurance, vision insurance, identity theft, and cyber protection, legal services insurance, and caregiving support services.
Okay, there is a motion and a second to bundle the six recommendations that trustee Ratan has just read. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries seven to zero now. You may read each of those recommendations, and we'll vote at the end.
Okay. So employee benefit programs. Matt Wheeler, Vice President, Client Services, Employee Benefits, and Michelle Olday, Account Executive of Holmes Murphy, presented the employee benefit plans renewal information for 2026. RFPs were sent in April to providers for medical, dental, and vision insurance, as well as identity theft and cyber protection, legal insurance, and caregiving support. An RFP review committee of colleagues at JCC was formed, and they reviewed all submissions for the benefit carriers. Ms. Olday, or Old, went through details of how the committee arrived at their provider of choice in each category. Regarding medical insurance plans, the RFP review committee recommended staying with Blue Cross Blue Shield of Kansas City, also known as Blue KC as a preferred provider. Blue KC has assessed the premium rate at 4.4% with an estimated annual premium of $23,505,530. This includes a rate cap of 9.9% if needed. The effective date would be January 1 of 2026. A recommendation was made by the Employee Engagement and Development Committee regarding the renewal and retention of Blue Cross Blue Shield of Kansas City as follows. It is a recommendation of the Employee Engagement and Development Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to renew and retain the Blue Cross Blue Shield of Kansas City Blue KC contract for Employee Group Medical Insurance from January 1, 2026 through December 31, 2026. Next, regarding dental insurance plans, the RFP review committee recommended keeping Delta Dental as a preferred provider. Delta Dental has assessed the premium rate at 4% with an estimated annual premium of $910,304. I cannot say my y'all out. The benefit also includes a rate cap of 5% if needed. The effective date would be January 1 of 2026. A recommendation was made by the Employee Engagement and Development Committee regarding the renewal and retention of Delta Dental as follows. It is the recommendation of the Employee Engagement and Development Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to renew and retain the Delta Dental of Kansas contract for the Employee Group Dental Insurance from January 1, 2026 through December 31, 2026. Next, regarding vision insurance, the RFP review committee recommended changing providers due to the renewal rate and rate guarantee. Please note, vision insurance premiums are fully funded by JCC employees. A recommendation was made by the Employee Engagement and Development Committee regarding changing vision plans from Surenci to IMED as follows. It is a recommendation of the Employee Engagement and Development Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to accept the IMED contract for the Employee Group Vision Insurance from January 1, 2026 through December 31, 2026. Ms. Olday also shared that the committee reviewed additional voluntary benefit options for identity theft and cyber protection, along with legal services insurance. She shared that these benefits are more, that these are benefits that more companies appear to offer. Their employees advised that the RFP committee recommend MetLife protection for identity theft and cyber protection. The additional benefit options for legal services, identity theft, and cyber protection are fully funded by JCC employees and involve no cost to the college. A recommendation was made by the Employee Engagement and Development Committee regarding the identity theft and cyber protection to the Johnson County Community College benefits package as follows. It is a recommendation of the Employee Engagement and Development Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to accept MetLife contract for employee ID theft and cyber protection from January 1 to 2026 through December 31, 2026. Additionally, with regard to legal services, it was recommended by the RFP review committee to utilize MetLife for this insurance as well. A recommendation was made by the Employee Engagement and Development Committee regarding the addition of additional legal services protection to the Johnson County Community College benefits package as follows. It is a recommendation of the Employee Engagement and Development Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to accept the MetLife contract for legal services insurance from January 1, 2026 through December 31, 2026. Regarding the caregiving support program, the RFP committee recommended changing providers from CareInLoop to Wealthy as a result of Wealthy's fee, plan offering, and enhanced service model. This benefit is currently paid by the college with no cost to share among college employees. The college's monthly cost will be $2,511, and the annual cost will be $30,135, which is a decrease from two, of 2.4% from last year. This provider is also including a rate guarantee for three years. A recommendation was made by the Employee Engagement and Development Committee regarding changing providers for caregiving support from CareInLoop to Wealthy as follows. It is a recommendation of the Employee Engagement and Development Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to accept the Wealthy contract for caregiving support services from January 1, 2026 through December 31, 2026, to continue to be paid by the college. And that completes all the recommendations.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Assumme.
Second.
Second.
Motion by trustee Cross, seconded by trustee Hamel. Before the board is a motion to approve in one bundle the recommendations just read by trustee Ratan related to medical insurance, dental insurance, vision insurance, identity theft, and cyber protection, legal services insurance, and caregiving support services. Any discussion? Trustee Cross.
Just want to say thank you to trustee Ratan for laboring through all that, and to our, all of our professional staff that helped put all that together. Thank you.
Big work.
Any other discussion? Trustee Ratan.
Benefits are a key part of total compensation and a clear retention tool. And so I would also like to thank the RFP committee for the intense level of attention to detail to bring something good back to our employees. So thank you.
Trustee Hamel.
Yeah, I don't like to reiterate things too often, but I was really impressed with the presentation that Matt and Michelle and everybody else put together. Clearly, a lot of thought and care went through that, and it was an extremely thorough presentation. So I appreciate the time and everything, all the effort to that.
Any other discussion? The only thing that I would add is, thank you to Christina, you and your team for working through all this. And our friends at Holmes Murphy have been helping us navigate this for many, many years. And it never ceases to amaze me how they can come back with what we think are going to be huge increases in premiums, because that's what we're seeing. And, and we seem to come out okay at the end. So kudos to them. So with that, we have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Yes. Aye.
Motion carries seven to zero. You may continue.
That completes my report.
Okay. Thank you for working through all that. That was a lot. Next on the agenda is the Management and Finance Committee report. And trustee Mitchell, we were not anticipating that you'd be able to make it tonight, but since you're here in the sky, are, do you want to deliver that report, or would you prefer to have trustee Ratan handle it?
I'll have to pull it up. Bear with me a minute. I can do that.
Okay.
If I can find it real quick. Oh, that's Board Governance. Bear with me a minute here.
That's okay. Why don't we just have trustee Ratan do it?
Thanks, Don.
No problem. Thank you, Chair Rail. The Management and Finance Committee held their meeting at 8:30 a.m. on Wednesday, August 6. The information related to the meeting can be found on pages 31 through 34 of the board packet. So the reports that we have is the Management and Finance Committee received the following reports. On capital infrastructure inventory and replacement plan, Tom Hall, Associate Vice President, Campus Services and Facility Planning, and Brett Edwards, Director, Campus Services and Energy Management, presented the annual overview of the capital infrastructure inventory and replacement plan and related systems and processes. This information is maintained by campus services staff and guides the decision-making process and allocation of resources for preventative maintenance and the preservation of campus infrastructure. On mission continuity and risk management, there's a semi-annual report. Sandra Warner, the Executive Director, Mission Continuity and Risk Management, provided a semi-annual report on the mission continuity and strategic risk management activities, as well as overview of the 2526 property insurance renewal process. Other agreements, Rachel Lear, Executive Vice President for Finance and Administrative Services, presented the annual renewal of the facility rental agreement, which is used for third-party facility rentals. Details can be found in the consent agenda portion of the August 14, 2025 board packet. Next, Tom Hall, Associate Vice President, Campus Services and Facilities Planning, gave an update on facilities, projects, and the capital acquisitions and improvements matrix report. The matrix summarizes and monitors budget and actual expenses for campus services projects, and includes payments through July 31, 2025. The Management and Finance Committee has the following recommendations to present this evening. For fiscal year 2025/26 budget publications, Megan Casey, Vice President and Chief Financial Officer, presented a recommendation to publish the notice of hearing to exceed revenue-neutral rate and budget hearing for the college's fiscal year 2025/26 legal budget and the legal record newspaper and on the college website. The hearing will be held during the Board of Trustees' meeting beginning at 5:00 p.m. on September 18, 2025. It is a recommendation of the Management and Finance Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to authorize the publication of the notice of hearing to exceed revenue-neutral rate and budget hearing for the 2025 budget, 2025/26 budget.
Do I have a motion?
Assumme.
Second.
Trustee Cross makes the motion. Trustee Smith Everett seconds. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. You may proceed.
In procurement reports and recommendations, Jim Fieker, Executive Director of Procurement Services, presented one recommendation for Regent's Flooring. It is a recommendation of the Management and Finance Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the cooperative purchase from Regent's Flooring for a total estimated expenditure of $250,000 for fiscal year 2026.
Do I have a motion?
Assumme.
Motion made by trustee Smith Everett, seconded by trustee Jennings. Any discussion?
Where was the, where was the flooring going?
Do you know the answer to that, trustee Ratan?
No, it says it's a cooperative, it was a cooperative purchase.
It is a cooperative purchase. This is just a bucket of dollars that we can use throughout the year for remodel projects and other uses.
Any other discussion? All right, hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. You may proceed.
Thank you, Chair Rail. That concludes my report, or Greg's report.
You know, you have gone above and beyond tonight, I must say, so. All right. That brings us to the Student Success Committee report. And trustee Jennings, what do you have for us?
Thank you, Chair Rail. The Student Success Committee met at 9:45 a.m. on Wednesday, August 6. The committee heard annual updates from two deans, Vince Miller, Dean of Academic Support, and Kathy Maheran, Dean of Students and Learner Engagement. Dean Miller discussed the difference, the different resource centers that combined to create the Academic Resource Center. He shared, he shared data from the previous four academic years, showing the increase in number of students and visits to each center. He explained how academic alerts and Cav comeback program work to benefit and retain students. Dean Miller further explained college success and to new students. Dean Miller further explained college success and two new initiatives, zero-cost workshops and first-year experience. He explained that due to K-Board developmental education changes, the reading department will merge with college success. Dean Miller shared positive data comparing fall-to-fall retention of first-time degree-seeking student has increased, and the Academic Support Division is contributing to this trend. Dean Maheran shared information that student basic needs not only helps with pantry items, but also provides student assistance funds for emergency financial assistance and the equipment loan program for access to laptops to help enable academic success. Dean Maheran shared that college and transfer services maintains over 300 transfer guides and works with 30 universities for seamless academic transfer. She said access services creates an accessible and inclusive environment for students, faculty, and staff, and has seen a 30% increase in mental health accommodations year after year. Dean Maheran discussed the successful Clear Saturday, Clear Expansion, and Connect programs for cognitive or delayed development students. She discussed the importance of success coaches and counselors and the changes beginning September 15th that include mandatory training for new degree-seeking students, math pathways for all students, and the case management approach for counselors contacting students. That concludes my report.
All right. Any questions or comments for Trustee Jennings? Trustee Smith-Evert?
My only question was, and it may be better for you, Dr. Mixa, how many people are we combining through reading department and college success? Like, how many personnel is that? I guess I didn't realize we had a reading department.
Gurb can count us out with that.
Glad I could answer. This is Gurbeshan Singh, Chief Academic Officer here. So, we have seven faculty who were doing the, were a part of the reading department, and we were offering devet courses. So, since we're no longer offering those, all those folks will be joining the college prefix for the college success.
And I know you already gave a presentation on this, and those of us that weren't on the committees were not there. It's me, that's her, that's it. Give me the high points of how that would change their role from reading to college. Like, what does that look like to transfer to that?
So, we looked at the Higher Learning Commission faculty qualifications, and they already meet all of those. They're going to teach, so it should be, it should be not a problem at all. We already had enough courses, so we will not be using some of the part-time faculty that were teaching some of those courses. So, in this case, we'll just use a full-time faculty to do that. So, the other thing that we're going to do, which Trustee Jennings also mentioned, the zero-cost seminars. So, we're going to put those in place of some of those devet courses because some of those students who will be enrolling in some of those corec model math and English courses may not make in those or may not get a successful grade. So, once we identify who they are, we can enroll them in some of those zero-cost webinars or seminars. And some of those faculty, the full-time faculty, will teach some of those. So, this will start next fiscal year.
And is this, like, do you have a roundabout number of how many students we're serving? I know we're phasing out the development ed for the corec. I'm just wondering, like, how many students does this affect in general?
We do not know. I mean, we have, we know what, the number of students we had in the previously in some of the devet courses, which I can email it to you because I don't want to give you an incorrect number.
Yeah.
Because I have the number for math. I don't have the number for reading. But moving forward, we do not know how many students will qualify or we will need to serve in those webinars or seminars that we're going to be starting.
Okay.
Because that is something, because moving forward, students can self-select which course they want to be in, so they're going to have to either come to us or go to advising and counseling and say, hey, by the way, I don't think I can make through this. Or the faculty in those corec models would have to identify for us those students, and then we can enroll them in some of those seminars. So, that's a number we don't have. So, we're going to just keep a little flexibility so we can increase or decrease the number of sections we offer.
Okay. That's what I wondered is just the selection process for that. Sometimes there's an awareness level that a student does not have about their own abilities, or they may have been in a school where they weren't required to meet the level of rigor that we expect here on campus. As a reading teacher for the littles, I know that reading is a compounding issue, and when we have students that have sort of been carried along through their K-12 experience and then come to college, it can be a real whiplash effect. So, thinking of our people being able to still meet those needs so that our students can be successful here is really a high priority for me, as always.
Right. So, we'll carry that priority forward, but I would just want to make sure that we will not be able to force them to drop the six hours. So, in some cases, they will probably stay in that course, fail that course, and then enroll in the zero-cost seminar and then try it again.
But our faculty have the ability to identify that these students are struggling at some point before we get to the fail.
Yes.
The class point, right? I understand that's been put into place.
Yes, and we do that currently, too.
I thought so. Yeah, that wasn't a big change. It's just awareness for our faculty. Okay. Thank you very much.
The other piece with this, I just want to make sure, I think we talked about it in the Student Success Committee, is those students moving forward would be enrolled in six credit hours, which is three hours for that course, let's say, is college algebra. Within three hours of the corec, so that's six hours. So, dropping them, let's say that students on a financial aid would be a problem. So, that's why we want to offer these zero-cost seminars, so that way hopefully they can stay in there, keep their financial aid, and still be successful at the end of the semester.
Thank you for that. Appreciate you explaining that. I am a reading person, and I know that it affects students tremendously, and there's an awareness that comes with that as you are a student who's struggling with reading that you may not really understand. And so, making sure we have mechanisms in place to support those students to still meet their goals is a really high priority, so.
Yes.
Personally. Thank you. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Sorry I'm belaboring this whole board meeting. Everybody can blame it on me when.
No, you're fine. And this is a creative solution to the problem created, I think, by having to eliminate devet courses. So, kudos to you and your team for coming up with, whoever came up with this idea. So, thank you for that question. It was a good one. So, any further discussion or questions or concerns for Trustee Jennings?
I'd just like to add, you know, I think those two new initiatives really support retaining students because it's been my experience is that first year is critical, and if they're not successful, we don't see them the next.
That's right. That's right. And they, sometimes the self-fulfilling prophecy that I can't do college or my family told me.
Absolutely.
It wasn't college material or college would be too hard then plays out, and students don't get to meagles that they had for themselves, so.
So, again, kudos to the committee that came up with, got their heads together and problem-solved a really wonderful solution that will continue to support our students. So, thank you.
All right. Any further questions or comments? Thank you for your report, Trustee Jennings. Next up is the President's Recommendations for Action. We'll start with the Treasurer's Report, and Trustee Hamel.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Board Packet includes a preliminary unaudited Treasurer's Report for the month ended June 30th of 2025. Total fiscal year 2025 general funds revenue were approximately 13 million higher than fiscal year 2024. This was primarily due to an increase in ad valorem property tax. General post-secondary technical education expenses for fiscal year 2025 were approximately 175 million compared to 159 million in 2024. The college's unencumbered cash balance in all funds was 186 million as of June 30th, 2025. Expenditures of the primary operating funds are within approved budgetary limits. It is the recommendation of the College Administration that the Board of Trustees approve the Treasurer's Report for the month ended June 30th of 2025, subject to audit. And I so move.
Second.
Second.
Motion made by Trustee Hamel, seconded by Trustee Cross. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries seven to zero, and you may continue.
That concludes my report.
Perfect. Thank you so much. That brings us, Dr. Mixa, to you and your monthly report to the board.
All right. Wonderful.
You've been here now for a month and a half.
Right.
So, you're an old hat now.
Yeah, yes, I truly feel like an expert right now.
I bet you do. All right. The floor is yours.
All right. Well, I'll start with enrollment, and we have John here today, so he can help me out if I go astray, but enrollment seems to be trending in a good direction. Headcount up about 0.3%. Our credit hours are up about 1.7%, which is solid, especially if you consider that change in that developmental education and kind of how that's impacting the institution. So, which that tells me, only being here a short period of time, that they're really managing that enrollment process and moving students through. So, we're excited about that. We're excited about students having, coming back, not next week, but the week after that. I also want to piggyback a little bit on what Irene had said earlier. We truly appreciate the work that the Counseling Department is doing, getting students enrolled and getting them into class. And so, that's just a great thing that's happening on our campus. And I also think it's important that they're doing that also at a time where we're talking about that idea of mandatory advising, career or the pathways program as well, too. So, we really appreciate the work that they're doing there as well. Also, Irene, myself, and Mickey, we sat down earlier this week and had a great conversation around some other things that we might be able to do to support the counselors as well, too. And so, we'll continue that dialogue and figure out how we want to move forward with that as well, too. So, I do appreciate that time that we had together as well there. I thought I'd also talk about, a little bit about what some of the other departments are doing as well to continue to get ready for the students coming this fall. It's really exciting. So, for me, it's super exciting because it's my first time doing it here at Johnson County Community College, and there's a lot of great things that are happening here. And hopefully, I won't duplicate because I'm also still learning how everything fits together. And if I like cross into your area, Gurb, just give me like a look or whatever, and I will move on from there a little bit. Or if I cross into another area, because Valerie, or Trustee Jennings, I'm sorry, you talked about some of these things as well, too, already. But if you talk about Cav Connections, that's a group that gets students prepared to come to campus here. We've hit about 250 students through our Cav Connection Program. We figure there'll be about another 100 students that we've been working through there. If you've been coming in on the student, in the student center, that side where we've got, it's a great space. Tom, you and your team did great work to make that work. But we've got that student engagement desk, which seems like it's always hopping, well, it's hopping even more now. They've done about 600 IDs over the last, I think they said, since August 20th, so, or not August 20. They have, they've done about 600 IDs looking at the wrong thing in recent time, since August 1st. So, that is great. I love seeing students sitting there getting their ID. Because you know what? That's something that really makes them feel proud about coming to Johnson County Community College. I think that's really important. One of the reasons also why I came here, I was really interested in is like it's just this really rich environment of clubs and organizations. And so, the Center for Student Involvement will be hosting their annual Clubs and Organization Leadership Retreat next week, so the students will be coming back for that. So, I look forward to hearing about that. I was talking to Leroy over in the business area, and one of the things he said to me was like, this place is great. Even on a Friday afternoon at 3:00, there's still students here doing clubs or being a part of clubs and organizations, so that's really exciting. And also, Welcome Week preparation continues. The Student Life Team is really gearing up for that, and there's going to be some great things. I'm looking forward to it. I get to see what it's like. Also, there's a chance I might be able to get on a golf cart and drive around with maybe some cameras and connect with students, so I'm looking forward to doing that. One of the areas on the campus that works incredibly hard, and I got lucky, I was walking over to the gym today to meet with our volleyball players, and one of our persons from financial aid came out and was, you know, that is a difficult area to work. There are people calling in, you know, the money part of the college is always very challenging. We have to do things that are asked of us by the federal government, rightfully so, to verify and all that. Nobody really understands that that's not us asking, that's the federal government asking. They have a reason to ask, and so, it's hard to sometimes convey that. But our people here on this campus do a lot of work in that area. They are also having a session where they've invited 2,600 students to come see if they are eligible, that are eligible for financial aid, excuse me, for federal work-study to come and see what kind of jobs that we have and get them on campus for that. So, that's really exciting as well, too. They're gearing up for a college financial aid night, so they'll take that on the road and make sure they get people prepared for that as they come in in the fall, or as they get ready for next school year as they work that through. And I think this is always interesting. They have processed about 6,000 FAFSA forms so far, so that is a lot and a lot of work there. And I think the other thing that's really important, there's been about 5,900 forms completed for our scholarships through our foundation, so that is a wonderful thing also as well, too. We talked about, a little bit about the Academic Resource Center and the great work that's being done there. I'm really excited to see that. They gave a report in that student, or I saw a report where there's about 70,000 hits at the Academic Resource Center last year. So, that's, you know, that could be one student going like 20 times, but still 70,000 different hits there. And I love the fact that our Academic Resource Center, everything's all in one spot, so it's kind of everything there to help everybody out. We've got our Cav Comeback Program. I also like to highlight that as well, too. That is a great program to connect with students that might have had a bad semester and saying, what can we do to get you going, get you back on track and moving forward there as well, too. I think we can never give a shout-out enough to our facilities folks, groundskeepers, custodians, and all the work that they're doing. I'm looking out the window, seeing bricks up off the ground, thinking, are they going to have this thing done before the school starts? And holy cow, they're going to get it done. They're doing some great work on the tennis courts. But not only that, I had the opportunity, you know, I don't mean to sound vain, but you know, they got to take some shots to do headshots or whatever for all that stuff, so please don't take that as vain. But Susan McSpadden, right, I got it right, and I were walking around campus, and she's taking different pictures, and I just kind of paused for a second. I said, Susan, is this not the most beautiful campus that you've ever seen? We all, well, we all, both of us agreed on that, so that's really wonderful. So, they are doing incredible work there, getting everything prepared. I think Val, Trustee Jennings already mentioned this as well, too. We've got a new classroom upstairs for our Clear and Connect students up there, so that is going to be wonderful and possibly expand that program as well, too. A little bit on the academic side, also, they've got a program going on, our Courseleaf Transfer Guide project, a project that's going to help our students be able to transfer a little bit easier, a little bit more successfully. We certainly can get you some more information. I don't want to go too deep into that, but it's us, and then we're connected with some of our largest schools that our students transfer to, so that's a positive, I think, that we have out there. Athletics, like I said, I got to go meet the volleyball team today. They seem to be very social media savvy, so we did a little recording. It'll be interesting to see what that comes up like, but that'll be exciting out there. They promised me they'd get back to Cedar Rapids, the national tournament, so I'm putting that promise out there to them, so I'm excited. But the other thing that's awesome is we had four athletes make the Academic All-American At-Large Team. That's Emily Crosby, make sure I get it right, Montana Rose Curry, Brandon Mann, and Aspen Bergart. So, we're excited about that. In nursing, and this is again, I need, I'll just say this over, over, over and over, a show of the quality programs that we have here. We had 59 nursing graduates. 57 have already taken the NCLEX, which that's good in itself that they've gotten there. And our pass rate is about 92.98%. Well, I shouldn't say about. That's pretty specific, right? And I should have just rounded up to 93. I'm a math person, so. Another thing I think that's really amazing is we've got another National Science Foundation grant. That's Professor Whitney Turner and Emily Humbry. And I think this goes to the math class where they're going to do some work creating that contemporary math course or that course that could be for our QuickStep program. So, this is a great math course that could help students get through that math with some math that's really a great application-type math that they could be used out in the workforce. I'm a math person, so that's something that's really exciting to me, and I think it's a great thing to have out there. This also is incredible as well, too. One thing I've heard over and over is how great our childcare center is and the team, the facilities team, Tom and his team. We created a new classroom over there, correct? And so, we have space for between another 20 to 25 students in that program, which is awesome, reduce the waitlist that we have there and be able to add more. And really, I know we get students from all type, but that benefits our employees to And really, I know we get students from all type, but that benefits our employees to a great degree as well, too. So again, going back to the benefits that you've mentioned, Trustee Retan there as well, too. I wouldn't be, I'd be remiss if I left out anything about workforce development, continuing education. You know, they serve about fifteen to twenty thousand students a year, so we always need to be talking about them as well, too. And I'm also, I enjoy railroads, we went to the STEM thing, I spent a lot of time on the train thing back there at the park. So we've got four new locomotive simulators there, and so we're excited about that. They haven't invited me out to do it, to mess with it, but I'm looking forward to getting out and messing with the simulators as well as just the simulators and the trucks, I won't be able to drive them because I don't have a license. But we'll, and we'll be able to restart our short-line engineering training program, so we're excited about that. You also heard about some of the different people, I've been lucky to meet Senator Marshall, Representative Sharice Davis, those are two that are out there. So we also got to meet with, who did we have lunch with, Kate, Ty, Sean Tarwater? So we met with Sean Tarwater, so just really trying to make sure we're making the connections that are out there. Look forward to PLD Week next week, if any of you can make it, love to have you there, give you an introduction out there and say hi to you also as well, too. I also want to thank who, everybody, but thank you for coming last night. It's, means a lot to Deb and I that you were there. I told Deb, I am gonna let you do all the speaking from now on, because you did a wonderful job last night. It'll take a little weight off my shoulders when we're there, but she did fabulous. I was so excited, I text her mom, dad, and her brothers, I said, you gotta tell your sister and your daughter that she did a wonderful job last night, so I really appreciate that. And just the last thing, I just thank you for all the work you're helping. I'm looking forward to talking next week about our mission statement and kind of bringing it together. Inspiring learning, transforming people's lives, and really strengthening this community, so it's a great thing. So, thank you very much, any questions?
That was a great report, any questions, Trustee Retan and then Trustee Cross.
I would like to know when we will get our mission statement put back on our wall.
I'm working on it.
Yes.
Thank you.
I, I had wondered that, and I saw Trustee Snyder yesterday, because that was his idea.
Yes, yes.
Are you left-handed?
I am left-handed.
I just noticed that.
Except I shoot right-handed, so let's keep that
We had spent some time together this year, and I didn't notice you were left-handed. I love that you're a math person, I'm not. It's awesome. Every single president here has worried about brick repairs, so thank you for continuing that tradition. Friday afternoon at three o'clock, don't we have the, isn't there a bakery or pastry sale?
Thursday.
Thursday, sorry.
I don't know, when does that, do we know when that starts?
Sorry about that.
It hasn't started yet, it's in the spring, isn't it?
No, it's all
I thought it was every, is it every week?
Every Thursday.
In a couple weeks.
Just, they have to start, and then
The FAFSA numbers, there was six thousand?
That's what I was told, six thousand.
I know the Kelly administration and the legislature had passed Kansas Promise, was that pre-COVID? And I remember going up to Senator Baumgartner, and I asked, I don't think I said, hey man, but I was like, hey, why'd you support that? And she goes, oh, it was great. And I said, she's kind of conservative, and I said, well, thanks for working with the Kelly administration on that. She goes, she goes, Lee, it's important that we get FAFSA applications up, so that's why I supported it. It was, you know, whether you're religious, conservative, liberal, or somewhere in between, like, it's just critical that we get people to apply here, and that they feel welcome here. So I want to thank you for bringing that to our attention. I texted you earlier on headcount, I don't know who to ask, because I've been wrong a bunch tonight, so. The headcount numbers, it looks low, at point-three for total headcount, or one point-seven for credit hours. But where does that compare, and I might need glasses, but like, since 2020, I mean, where are we since? I mean, we're way up, aren't we, since the pandemic?
Well, yeah, because of the COVID trend was completely different back then, but yes, we are, I have to go back and look at that far back.
Yeah, I think it was Roy Williams and Mike Sheshevsky used to talk about, you have to cut down your nets, right? Like, each time you advance in tournament play. So I just, I think that that's critical, and I want to thank everyone for the work that's gone into getting those numbers up. So it looks perhaps low this year, but from where we were, that, that's way up, so. You look born to do the job, and I'm glad to have you here.
Thank you very much, very kind, very kind.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments, Trustee Smith-Evert?
Was there somebody else who was supposed to speak before me? Sorry.
No, I think you're up.
All right, sorry about that. I just wanted to say, for being here six weeks, that was a very thorough report with a lot of things, even after six years, you think you know this place, and you don't, and there are just amazing things going on all the time, and it's great that you are getting to know so many of them. And I just wanted to shout out to everyone that, if they have not followed you on Instagram, you have great posts with our students. It's my, it's like one, Taylor and Travis are first, and then after that, I really enjoy checking in, because you really, you really encapsulate the fun that our students have, that our staff has, and all that they do to contribute. So I can't wait, as the semester rolls out, to see what creative ideas the students get you to do with them in your, in your posts. But if you have not followed them, it's worth the follow, because it's really fun to get to see our students, the lightbulb one with the, what group was that?
That was the student
Investor. Student Ambassador Group, last week was great, so.
We'll see what, we'll see how the volleyball one turns out.
Yeah, they are always a
A little nervous, because they're, yeah, yeah, right.
They're a fun group, they will get, they got something great, I'm sure.
All right.
And on that social media, you know, I want to thank Chris Gray and his team, Cali, they've been doing some work, or even kind of, I mean, I did it before at my last place, but they've kind of, we've kind of been working together to sort of kind of brand it out and kind of go down a path, so.
Nice.
It's been great.
Well, hopefully there aren't any work comp claims in your future, so. Yeah, your social posts are great, so, any other questions or comments for Dr. Mixa? That was a tremendous report, thank you for taking the time to put that together, and it, it sounds like your, your feet are definitely under you, and you're, you're heading down the path, so, we appreciate it. All right. That brings us to new business, I'm not aware of any new business.
If I may.
Yes.
My daughter started the Center for Academic Achievement, which on Mission East this year, and she's a part of the biotech program, I guess. I'm learning what this is, and I need to talk to somebody here, because I have some anxiety about what it means for her, but she wanted to do it. And so yesterday, she completed her application to Johnson County Community College, thereby becoming third-generation to attend the school. And she also had to apply to Smokey Hills something, Technical School, as a part of that, that COA program. So I just, there's no business, really, your action, I just thought I'd share, I'm sure, I'm not a math person, but.
Yeah. Well, congratulations.
Thank you.
Right? And it's interesting that you point out the legacy piece of that, because I find that that is true so often. My kids went here, I went here, my parents went here, whatever that, that looks like, so thanks for sharing, that's awesome.
I'm up for reelection, so I wanted to.
Yeah, okay. I still don't think there's any new business, but thanks for sharing. I'm not aware of any old business either, which brings us to the Consent Agenda. The Consent Agenda is an opportunity for the board to take up in a single motion, matters of a fairly routine nature. And I always start by asking if there's anything in the Consent Agenda that anyone would like to remove for separate consideration. Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the Consent Agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Trustee Smith-Evert, seconded by Trustee Cross, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. That brings us to our executive session portion of the board, we do have an executive session this evening. And so I'd like to entertain a motion to go into executive session to discuss a personnel matter regarding non-elected personnel for the purpose of protecting the privacy interests of the personnel to be discussed. The executive session will last for thirty minutes. It will begin at seven twenty-five and end at seven fifty-five, at which time, open session will resume at this same location. We'd like to invite Dr. Tony Mixa, Dr. Gurbeshan Singh, Christina McGee, and Kelsey Nazar to join this executive session. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
So moved.
Motion made by Trustee Smith-Evert, seconded by Trustee Cross, all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries six to zero, we will reconvene in executive session at seven twenty-five, that should give everybody time for a bioware. Seven fifty-five, and we have emerged from executive session, no action was taken. And at this time, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Come move.
Second.
Motion made by Trustee Cross, seconded by Trustee Hamel, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero, and we are adjourned.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much.